Thank you. Clerk Golick-Rocha.
Alexander.
President.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Calwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Raichels.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show, nine are present, zero absent, nine are in chambers. Item number three, Mayor address, and Chief of Staff Phil Talon will give it. How you doing, Phil?
Good evening, Mr. President and Council. Thank you for letting me fill in for Mayor Tom this evening. I do have several updates for everybody I'd like to share. First and foremost, I'm excited to announce some promotions that we are undertaking in the city of Hammond. Mayor Tom McDermott Jr. is pleased to announce two promotions in the Hammond Fire Department for Deputy Chief and Battalion Chief. Bernie Grizziola, a 14-year veteran of the Hammond Fire Department, has been promoted to Deputy Chief. Grizziola began his career with the Hammond Fire Department, September of 2008, as an EMT. He's worked in various positions with the department. He started his career in the fire department, working part on the ambulance crew. Through hard work and diligence, he worked through the ranks as a private assistant engineer in advance to his current position of Battalion Chief. Mr. Grizziola was raised in Hammond and graduated from St. Francis to Sales High School. He continues always looking for opportunities for himself and, you know, obviously put himself in position to get this promotion. So, we congratulate him on becoming the Deputy Chief. I probably should mention, prior to that, that our current Deputy Chief, Kevin Margraff, has announced his retirement. I believe his last day is November 3rd or November 4th, one of those two days, which is why we have these promotions taking place. And, of course, we want to thank Deputy Chief Margraff for all the years of service that he's done with the fire department. He's been an amazing person to work with. From my perspective, I know Mayor Tom will have his own comments at the next council meeting that he's here, but he is, he's been a great leader. And we thank him for everything that he's done for the city of Hammond and, of course, the city of Hammond Fire Department. With Mr. Grizziola's promotion, we also want to announce that Ryan Aguiano, a 17-year veteran of the Hammond Fire Department, has now been promoted to Battalion Chief. Mr. Aguiano began his career with the Hammond Fire Department in February of 2005. During his tenure with the fire department, he has held various positions such as private, paramedic, and engineer. Prior to joining the Hammond Fire Department, Mr. Aguiano had worked as a paramedic for the Holbert Fire Department since 1996. Mr. Aguiano has continued his education in fire instruction and earned several certificates. He's a lifelong resident of Hammond, graduate of Gavitt High School. So, we want to congratulate Mr. Aguiano as well. I hope I'm not destroying his last name. Councilman Raicos, did I say that? Okay, good. Mayor Tom did have a quote saying, "I am pleased to be able to promote these two outstanding individuals who have remained Hammond residents throughout their time on the Hammond Fire Department." So, congratulations to Deputy Chief Margraff and now Deputy Chief Grizziola and Battalion Chief Aguiano. Next, I wanted to just very briefly say a Mayor's Night Out is coming up this Wednesday, October 27th, 6:30 PM. It's in the 5th District and the Jefferson Elementary School cafeteria. At this Mayor's Night Out, we are going to have a short but special presentation talking about the Kennedy Avenue Redevelopment Project. So, I know in downtown Hammond, we had a special presentation at The Hub. And as everybody probably knows at this point, we took a lot of ideas that Jeff Speck gave for downtown Hammond, stole them, and are now using them for Kennedy Avenue and the Hessville area as well. So, we hope all of you can join us on Wednesday. Even though it is in the 5th District and technically a lot of Kennedy Avenue is the 6th District, obviously, these districts are very close and, you know, are similar that they're so close to each other you probably don't even know which district you're in half the time. So, we hope that all of you can join us for that special presentation on Wednesday.
Oh.
Yes.
There was, was there another Mayor's Night Out left at the end of the year, too?
There is one Mayor's Night Out at the end of the year. I know on the, on the signs that we put up early on, I think it says November 3rd. However, because of some of the changes that we made, I believe the last Mayor's Night Out is on December 8th.
And that is in the 6th District?
I don't have the location, but Councilman Raicos seems to agree with you.
I believe it's Scott School.
Scott School on December 8th, Scott.
I believe it's December 8th. And let me ask, why don't I have Mayor Tom at the next council meeting? Go ahead and update the council on that to make sure that we don't have any miscommunication on that last one. But I'm glad you brought that up because it does say on the signs that are posted, some that got out there early on, I think it does list November 3rd. And we have changed that date to a different date, which I believe is December 8th. This Wednesday, also, same as Mayor's Night Out, at 2:00 PM is what we call Hammond's Industry Day with the Regional Development Authority, also known as the RDA. This is an event that helps Hammond showcase the Transit Development District that we created for developers that may be interested in developing and investing in Hammond. We will discuss the financial benefits of investing specifically in a TDD area and future development opportunities that we will have to offer. We will specifically talk about the Gateway Station. I know, we know there's another station coming in at 173rd and Lyman. We have not finalized the TDD area for that area just yet. This one will specifically target the Gateway Station and the Transit Development District that we created around that station. We will also talk about the future downtown Hammond Station that we are currently working with NICD and the RDA in creating. This one will be right in the heart of downtown Hammond. And we believe it'll be integral to the revitalization efforts that we are currently undertaking for the downtown Hammond area, which, of course, will correspond with some of the changes that we're going to be doing next year to Holman Avenue, which we've talked at length about. So, I won't get into unless anybody has any specific questions on that.
Just where's the meeting at?
So, it's a virtual meeting. It'll be on Zoom. It's 2:00 PM. And any council people that would like to get the link, I will be happy to send it to you. So, if you want, I can even send it to the council office. And then you can distribute it to everybody, so you can all be a part of it. By the way, there are at least 10 developers that are currently signed up for that and maybe a few more. So, it really is a great opportunity for us to showcase what we're going to be doing and the opportunities that we're going to have. I know I've heard people in the past talk about, well, we have a station, you know, right off of Holman Avenue. Why didn't all this development happen around it, you know, a long time ago? And I don't think they had the planning efforts that we have today. I think we really kind of have a better understanding of if you want to be successful around the station, you've got to follow a playbook of things that need to happen to create that success. Things like Industry Day and talking about this future station. And, for example, the financial benefits of investing in a TDD, I think, will put us in a different position to attract these developers and have future development around the new station. So, I hope you all can join. It should be, you know, a nice event for us and really talk about our opportunities that we're going to have.
Phil, who decided the boundaries for these districts?
It was a large group of department heads, I would say, headed by our city planner, Brian Poland, and our city engineer, Dean Button. But I, our economic development team, Africa Tarver and Andy Anderson were heavily involved, myself, Mayor. I think maybe council people from time to time had some input, but, you know, there's been many meetings on this.
I think it was an oversight with the council, because I know council people who didn't get any meetings.
Well, let me tell you this. So, the first boundary, they give you so much acreage that you can create for the first boundary. And then with so much time, and I know Brian could speak for this, I believe he's here, we actually get to add a certain amount of acreage to it. So, the first district is what I would call almost a no-brainer, Councilman, because it's really the downtown Hammond area and just, you know, if you drew a circle around it, that's essentially what we're, we focused on. We did specifically target properties that are what I'd call as close to shovel-ready for development. But really, it's all piggybacking off of the new Gateway Station that's going to be there. So, in the end, if you're an investor, if you're a developer, you're really going to focus on what can I build here that is going to be successful based on this station that is being constructed? So, we can create all the boundaries in the world, but there, you know, in the end, the TDD is really going to have, you know, the obvious goal of this is to have development be built up around the TDD that will be successful because they are around the new station, if that makes sense.
I understand that completely.
Okay. Were there any other questions about the TDD boundaries? Lastly, there was a, an email sent out to all employees. I would imagine all the council of men and women received it as well. So, I just wanted to read it very quickly. "Over the past several months, our administration has been researching the city's health insurance options. Our goal is always to ensure that our employees and their families, as well as qualifying retirees and their families, are afforded the best coverage while at the same time being fair and reasonable to the city's finances and budget. As you know, the city's third-party administrator and broker has been professional claims management for as many years as I can remember, or otherwise known as PCM, for the, for over two decades. They have served us well, and Mr. Dave Baker has been a true partner with the city while providing this service. We were recently notified that PCM would not be renewing their agreement with the city and would no longer be providing health insurance services after January 1st, 2022. Fortunately, our administration had been diligently researching this issue and had met with all the national carriers to determine which would best suit the city's needs, while making sure any change in coverage would minimize impact to the covered people that are currently in the plan. I am therefore happy, Mayor Tom is therefore happy, to announce that this transition will result, I'm sorry, therefore happy to announce that United Healthcare will be the city's health insurance carrier as of January 1st, 2022. Even more pleased to announce that this transition will result in few, if any, changes in coverage and will not result in any increase in fees that you pay for your health insurance coverage. This change should also allow for faster processing of claims and payment to healthcare providers. Amy Smith in our controller's office, which I'm sure we've all talked to for insurance purposes over the years, will continue to be our liaison between city employees and United Healthcare should any issues arise. This transition will require all of us working together. And as the year moves on, more information will be provided, including when transition meetings and what we call onboarding to United will be made available to our employees and other covered persons. Our consultant, the Myers-Laros Group, will be assisting us during the transition. So, I hope you welcome United Healthcare with us as our new carrier. As the memo said, we're very excited. Although we've had great insurance over the years, this is an opportunity. And based on the meetings that I participated in, it seems like we're going to have more modernized apps and things of that nature, technology, so that it'll make insurance needs and coverage easier on all of us. If anybody has any questions on that, I'm happy to answer as best I can. And I should, there is going to be some meeting, there's going to be a few meetings come up that'll get a lot more specific with the changeover and what we call the onboarding. So, over the next couple of months, I'm sure you'll be inundated with information on this change.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Phil, I'm not sure if you can say this now or if you can let us know later. See that it says that PCM would not be renewing the contract. Is there reasons behind why they are not? And if you can't say them right now, you can let us know at a later's time. It's fine.
When PCM let us know, they sent us an email that said they no longer would offer a contract for future services. You know, I think we believe it was a personal decision by Mr. Dave Baker. He didn't get specific on what it is. I know he had, at some point, was talking about, you know, retirement and things of that nature, but he did not get specific as to why they wouldn't be offering new services going forward.
Does anybody else have any further questions? Anybody else have any further questions for Mr. Talon? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval of the minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Motion to accept the minutes from October 12, 2021, be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick-Rocha.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion carries. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Raicos.
I make a motion. We approve claims. Starting with claims dated 10/18/2021 and ending with claims dated 10/2021. Claim number 5105 through claim number 5382 in the amount of $4,944,303.38.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Raicos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick-Rocha.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion carries. Item number six, public hearings, there are none. Item number seven, communications. Does anyone have any communications? Are there any communications? Hearing none. Communications are now closed. Item number eight, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You're right.
Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
Council as a whole will be bringing out 21-24 for third and final reading.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I'd like to report on the October 18th meeting of the Capitol Improvements Board. We approved $20,000 for the Hoffman Avenue on Street Trail. We also approved $322,950 for the Marquette Greenway from Kennedy to Klein. There, we have a meeting scheduled on November 1st. It is tentative at this point. It may be a Zoom meeting. So, please check with the Engineering Department or online to see if that meeting is, is going to take place. And, Mr. President, I also have the Crime Watch meetings.
Go ahead.
All righty. On November 3rd, Edison Community Watch will meet at 6:30 PM at Edison School. Previously announced a tentative meeting with Harrison Park on October 26th has been canceled and we don't have a rescheduled date at this point. The Hessville Crime Watch will meet on Thursday, November 18th, at the Gene Shepherd Center at 6:00 PM. Irving Community Watch will meet at Irving School on Friday, November 5th at 9:15 AM. The Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, November 11th at 6:30 PM at Calumet College. Hammond, there will be a meeting at Hammond Elderly Wednesday, October 27th at 1:00 PM. Once again, I encourage everyone to come out to these meetings to find out what's going on in your neighborhood and also have any questions that you may have answered. And as always, call 911 if you see anything suspicious because community is not just about me. It's about us.
Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Correction on the numbering of the ordinance coming out for third and final. I had said 21-24. It's 21-42.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Sorry for the confusion, but that Harrison Park Crime Watch, our Community Watch meeting, did get rescheduled. It's scheduled for next Tuesday, so November 2nd, at 5:30. We normally meet on the first Tuesday of each month, and this is going to be a special meeting to try to fit one in for October. But instead, we decided to push it back so that our Park Department Director, Jim Talon, could come and speak about potential upgrades to Harrison Park. So, once again, that meeting will take place on Tuesday, November 2nd, at 5:30 PM at the VFW Post on Holman. So, anybody in the Harrison Park community, please come out, join that meeting and hear updates, potential updates that we could be pursuing for Harrison Park over the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Any more committee reports? Any more committee reports? Hearing none. Committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinance, third reading and final passage.
Ordinance number 2142, sponsored by Councilman Calwinski. The petitioner is Kymat College of St. Joseph and ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514, which is an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan as amended for property commonly known as 2450 New York Avenue.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
I call for third and final reading of 21-42.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption by Councilman Kowinski, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. Just to summarize, this is a rezoning ordinance to allow for the construction of a dorm on the property of Cal College as well as open space that will be used as a field for athletics. And that's the reason for the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything, or, I'm sorry, is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion on this ordinance? Clerk Golick-Rocha.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, the motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warple, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Is item number 10, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance number 21-43, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. An ordinance vacating a 22,690-square-foot portion of Foresight Square lying between 119th Street, Warwick Avenue, and Hammond Court and Foresight Square in the 1900 block of Foresight Square in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2143. Refer to council as a whole with the committee meeting on November 8th at 5:15 PM. Also, an intent to consider will be on November 8th as opposed to the November 22nd that was on the agenda.
For clarification, Councilwoman Vines, is that the public hearing and not the intent to consider?
There is an intent to consider, too, I believe. Is that, no, there is not. Just a public hearing.
So, the motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick-Rocha.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item B, ordinance 21-44, sponsored by Councilman Spitali. An ordinance creating a new fund, number 297, for FY 2022 Lake County Drunk Driving Task Force grant funds.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
First and second reading, 2144. The council as a whole, was the meeting set for November 8th, 2021, at 5:15?
Second.
That one was a tie, believe it or not. You and, so, the motion was made by Councilman Spitali, seconded, seconded on the first time by Councilwoman Alexander and Councilman Emerson, so.
Ladies first.
What's that?
Ladies first.
We'll go ladies first on this one. Is that okay?
No flip of the coin.
Okay.
I agree.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick-Rocha.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warple, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 11, resolutions, there are none. Item number 12, under new and unfinished business, since the ordinance passed, the notice of intent goes away, goes away. Is there anything else under new and unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I make a motion to reappoint Karen Janica to the Library Board. And her term, it's a four-year term that will extend through 2025. I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made to reappoint Karen Janica to the Library Board by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Raicos. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Karen has served on, on this board for quite some time. She's an asset, as you know. Karen knows how to watch every penny. So, it really helps on the Library Board. Thank you so much.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick-Rocha and the motion.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, the motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed. Does anybody else that has anything under new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
He's pointing to you. So, Councilman Emerson.
I wanted to announce that the city... Uh, I wanted to announce that, uh, the city is having the 8th Annual Veterans Appreciation Day Parade, uh, Saturday, November 6th at 20, uh, 2021, obviously, at 10:00 AM. The parade route will be Oakwood Avenue and 173rd Street East to Hessville Park Veterans Memorial. A brief ceremony at the memorial will immediately follow the parade. Uh, it's the only one in Northwest Indiana that we know of. Uh, if you know a veteran or you just want to say thanks, uh, and if you're immobilized in any way, you can ride on a trailer. So the 8th Annual, uh, Veterans Day Parade, for further information, you can call 219-853-6378.
Thank you. Councilman Tyler?
Yep. Uh, Mr. President, I just wanted to go on record and clarify that as of right now, we are operating under the Governor's Executive Order for virtual meetings, uh, which in the future would allow for anybody to vote on any item, including budget items in the future via Zoom or any electronic means. Okay. So just wanted to clarify. So at the last meeting, Councilwoman Alexander and I, I know, weren't able to vote on the budget, uh, but in the future, anybody who is virtual should be able to. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, we talked, we discussed that in caucus, and the state law is superseded by the Governor's order, which is still in effect till the end of the year, correct?
Right. Although the order will expire the end of the month, it'll probably be renewed, so that would be correct.
Thank you.
Just wanted to get that on the record.
Yeah, no problem. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Alexander.
At the next meeting, I will give the updated COVID numbers. I just want people to know that I'm not going to give them today. I'm going to give the updated COVID numbers at the next meeting instead of today. I just wanted the people to know.
Okay.
So that they're like sitting here like, where's the numbers at?
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none. New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression. I see George Sawyer's names on the list. Welcome back.
I think we've all missed each other, so I'll dispense with that kind of stuff. But I would like to note, or first like to note, uh, give a little context. I believe I've been more than patient, that is, myself and of course, the good citizens of Hammond. Is Holman Avenue ever going to open up again, uh, from where it's closed off there by the, uh, I guess it's what, South or Chicago Avenue? I mean, how long is that thing going to stay closed? I mean, I feel like the city's suffering a fragmenting or a breach that needs to be made whole, healed, as it were. I just wonder, you know, it's just, you know, sometimes you, uh, you get a chance to outrun a train heading north or, you know, and, uh, you know, some of these trains go from Kennedy to, uh, well, the last one that I outran, uh, only to be thwarted, was from Kennedy, literally, to, uh, past Calumet Avenue. This was one train. It was incredible. And I mean, yeah, I was hot dogging a little bit, but not that bad. And I wasn't the only one, believe me. Uh, it's, uh, and then you get there and you ma, and you make the cut and you get over that hill and boom. You got to go right back the other way, and all these guys are backed up waiting for the train to clear. Anyway, it's just, you know, it just seems that nobody says anything about it. Uh, and it just lingers and lingers and lingers. A lot of the construction along, uh, some of the other streets, side streets there are just lingering. Um, I don't know how the distribution of funds is, work in progress, all the other good stuff that, uh, critical path, method of payment, construction work is how that, how, what the contracts read. Anyway, I just wanted to raise, it's not a criticism necessarily, but, uh, I have been patient. Anyway, also, I enjoyed the distinction that was brought out, I think it was last meeting, concerning the, uh, new ordinance requiring city employees to report whether or not, or report whether they've been arrested and the distinction between arrest and conviction. And I got the feeling, and I don't know if this is a criticism or not, but this, this thing that's mandating reporting being arrested, I, I guess, uh, I got the feeling that, you know, I've been watching the baseball playoffs, and some of these hitters are so good, they can sit there with two strikes and just keep fouling a ball off, fouling a ball off, fouling a ball off, fouling the pitch, fouling the pitch. It just seems like that we're penalizing, let's just say that you got arrested more than once, twice, thrice, unless you got a conviction against your name. I found it, and I'm sure there, oh, well, I'm not sure, but I assume that there's adequate, adequate, eh, maybe not dispositive, but adequate precedent and some other stuff that's, uh, has something to do with liability and who you got working for you, blah, 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 blah. But on the other hand, you do have the, uh, the other aspect of a person's individual privacy. And, uh, that's fundamental. And I don't know, again, I don't know, I didn't read the, the, uh, the provision, but I just got the feeling that, assuming that hypothetically, that, that somebody got a few arrests, it's like fouling off a pitch absent a conviction. You foul the pitch off, you foul another one off. And it just seems you might be stigmatized or prejudiced because it's kind of odd that if you get arrested, you got to go to your foreman. And then, and then I heard somebody say, well, and he'll decide what to do about it. And it's like, there was no criteria advanced on, on what would guide his decision or determinations. I just thought it was absent, again, a view of the, uh, criteria, if any, set forth in the ordinance. It just seems rather arbitrary and almost subjective. Uh, so I was hoping for at least some mention. Nothing was brought out. Councilman Calwinski raised the issue. I think, uh, Councilman Tyler and maybe somebody else, I don't remember, uh, uh, raised the issue and, and objected somewhat, and I think they're objecting, if I may be so bold, as to the objectivity of it all. And so here I am, returned, raising.
Thank you, Judge, and I want to go on record as saying, as long as you keep trying to beat trains, I hope you win every time. Does anybody else have anything on, I, I'm sorry, hearing, uh, nobody else signed up for public expression. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made, seconded by?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Alexander, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yep.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Have a nice couple of weeks, guys.